That brings us up to the next item on the agenda, which is the continued public hearing, our GFA site plan approval for 36 Pine Street. The applicant is here. Did you bring the revised landscape plan?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we could just discuss that. I think that was the issue I remember as being the outstanding issue, the revisions to the landscape. Anybody else remember anything else? I don't think there are any.
Do you want it up on the ...
Yeah, if you could.
Okay. So, I'm Karen Sebastian, I'm a landscape architect of my clients' property. And the last meeting was at the meeting, he was requested to revise the landscape plan, the landscape screening plan between his house and the next one. Previously, he had said that he was going to use some shrubs that were on-site to transplant in this area. But as we went out there to look at it and look through the buffer to the house next door, we thought that we should put in two larger trees so that they can grow in and actually do the screening that's needed. The shrubs that are on-site are kind of, are at their mature heights now, so they're not going to get any larger. We're proposing to put in two Norway spruce that are, they're going to be 10 to 12 feet high, and they're located, these two right here. There's already existing along this property line, a pretty good buffer, and I have a picture to show you, which you may want to see that close, but... So, this is the buffer. This is, I'm, when I took this photograph, standing right here at the garage, looking back to the neighbor's house. And this is where the neighbor's house is behind, and these would be the two, the size of the two trees going in. So those are photos that we took of 10 to 12-foot nursery grown trees, and that's the coverage they would give. There's, if you look through, there was a little glimpse maybe of this window and this window, but these trees, as they grow, and they're medium to fast grown trees, are going to go 40 to 60 feet tall and 20 to 30 feet wide, so that is all going to get covered.
What's the growth rate for a year for the ...
They're medium to fast, so, yeah, a foot, anyway.
What ...
Yeah.
Were you standing when you took this picture?
I was standing ...
Point it out where you're standing.
So, if you ... So, the garage is here, and I was standing here looking through. And if you look on the lower part of the plan, there's a locust plan that shows the neighbor's house in the orange. If you want, I can bring this up closer to you. And this, so I would stand in here, so it's blocking.
So if those trees were 20 feet wide, it seemed like they were kind of close together initially.
They are close together, but there's, that's kind of where there's a gap in the existing trees to fit them, and that's the area that needs to be covered. So they will grow into each other.
They will grow into each other.
Yeah.
And then what about all the other plantings you're showing? Are those ...
So these are all existing plants. So these are existing, the darker green ones are existing evergreens. So there's white pines here, here, here. These are some deciduous, there's an ash, and these are ashes, actually. And then there's shrubs here, so they're, if you look at ...
So where are the ones relocated? Where are the ones that are being relocated? Are they not being relocated anymore?
The ones that, the shrubs that ...
That he proposed be relocated or not going to be relocated?
Well, he's not saying that he's not going to relocate them. He will probably relocate them along here. He's, the lot is a really woodsy lot, they're only taking down one tree on this lot to start with, so he's building on the footprint of the existing house. The garage is actually being moved back further from the property line. So he's really trying to keep the integrity of the site, and it's just this one screening area. So the existing shrubs that are mature, that will be moved, they may go along here and would add to that screening, but we don't want to count on them, because you can never really count on a transplant. They're on, you know, they're on this side of the house now, they're, they're in a protected area, they're going to be moved to a different condition, you don't know exactly if they're going to survive, and no one guarantees ...
So you're saying they're not required for the screening?
They're not required for the screening. They're shorter plants, too.
I guess, it seems that if they were going to be relocated, they should be shown on the plan, because otherwise, people are going to be confused why there are all these plants shown up there that aren't on the plan.
Well, usually, in the past, it hasn't been a problem to add plants. It's not a concentration area.
No, but they need to be documented, don't they?
You're talking about having a documented site plan that shows where the plants are going to go. I mean, maybe it's ...
Could that be done afterwards, a revised plan? Yes, these plants, you have to move the asphalt. Yeah, is the asphalt ...
So this is, this is maybe something we want to ... Not relative just to this project, but to other ones as well. And what, if there's, if there's items, so this is, assuming that these transplanted plants aren't vital to providing the screening or anything like that. If we have to document them, and then every time someone moves them, or adds one, or cuts one down, it's another process. I mean, you know, if it's, if there's things that aren't vital to decision, do those need to be always on the plan so that the owners are locked into them? Which is fine initially, but then, if the rhododendrons die, and the next owner comes along, and they see this plan, and say, you know, we're getting, spending another half hour on here on a Wednesday night trying to figure out why?
No, but I don't think we have to do that. I don't think we actually needed to do that for 501 Glen Road, for example. I think we could have, that, there are some, some decisions that I think we can make on an administrative level that would, don't, don't rise. I know why we did it for Glen Road, because there were so many trees coming down, but, for example, the one on Conan, maybe, maybe that, maybe some of these can be just ...
Yeah, I'm not talking administratively, I think maybe Jeffrey Bump's foundation plan is a better example. Now, he showed foundation plantings on the approved plan, and to delete them, not speaking for everyone, but no one really cared. But, if that was the only change, you would still have to come back before the board with a revised plan for us to understand.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think that, I think we need to be judicious about when it bumps up to the level of review by the board. I don't think that one actually needed to get bumped up to review by the board. I think that's one that maybe, you know, the planner, and Kim, and one of the planning board members could have just reviewed, signed off on, and reported back to the board. I don't think any of us would have objected to that process at all, and then Jeffrey doesn't have to get scheduled for a hearing and all the rest of it. And the same, I think, it's good to have some kind of a record of where, of what the baseline is, but it's not, I agree with you that it, that any change doesn't automatically trigger a full-blown board review. I just think it's a waste.
So, so on something like this, would we say on the plan, these are the trees vital to screening, and these were remained, and remain in good health, and cannot be touched? If these rhododendrons come down?
Well, what's your suggestion, Kim?
So, when we first went and had a site walk here, I don't think any member of the board was, there was no red, there wasn't a red flag here in terms of the buffer, because the existing buffer was so robust. And I think we did hear from one abutter that there was a concern about, you know, the direct view shut between the two. And I agree, there's one sort of smallish gap in that buffer, and I think these trees will hide that very well. My concern with documenting the transplants is the same one. If they die, are they going to be required to find a plant of that size in the nursery and continue to try to transplant it until it survives? I just don't think that's ...
So we need to, but in that case, what we need to do is identify which plantings matter.
Right.
Which are critical.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So it just determines just these two?
In this instance.
And the ones that are ...
That are, and then critical.
Within the existing buffer, right?
Yeah.
Existing buffer, so ...
So when we're talking about, you know, taking a look at the decisions, we need to figure out some way to make that distinction, right?
Right.
Yeah, on maybe the more, this, this site's not probably the best example, but a more complete lot makeover, you know, like if you, you know, your true tear-down, lot reconfiguration, rebuilding, maybe, maybe, you know, a full team, maybe it's, it's a combined landscape, it's two landscape plans, or a landscape overlay. Like, this is a complete landscape plan, and these are the ones that we see as important to the screening. You guys might say, no, take some from that plan and put it on this plan. We see these as important as well, or something like that.
Yeah, I like that.
And so, what gets recorded and locked in, and we're not trying to read decisions versus plans and things like that, are, is on the plan, just, you know, I'm the engineer, so I like plans, I don't like reading, you know, so it might, might work better for other people other way, but on that plan are just the plants that are really important to the decision. And I never have to be here again for foundation plantings, or someone shrub dying, or, you know, something like that.
That makes sense, that would be nice.
Or not even here, but like, you know, like someone rolling in to say, my rhododendrons died, you know?
Well, it gets to be very, very complicated. Let's say you transplant one big rhododendron, and it's fine, and we have it all locked in, and then the homeowner decides to put up some salience around it, and we're going lovely, and then the big rhododendron dies, and what do you do? You get so in the weeds regarding ...
So does that really?
Yeah, literally, yeah. I didn't intend it.
But there won't be cases where that rhododendron should be on the base plan.
Right, should be on the base plan, yes.
Like the scaling tree that's close to the foundation.
Right.
That I think would be on the thing.
Something that's documented.
But any of these other, you know, more ...
Just gets, yeah, really crazy.
You know, so it's kind of, just kind of getting on the registered plan of stuff that we really ...
Right.
So are you proposing also an as-is documentation, or just one ...
No.
Landscape plan?
No, the as-is needs to be part of it.
Really?
Okay.
Even for a moved plant?
No, no.
No, no.
Only for like this, you know ...
For the actual ...
Yeah, I mean ...
But what's required?
Right, the required.
You know, the ones you find important for, you know, so there's existing trees along here that if they were to disappear in a year, you'd be pretty upset. So those need to be documented, so I'm not just talking ...
But that's the do not touch.
Yeah.
That's everything that's colored there.
Yeah.
Those trees are recorded.
If, well, but there are others, this is just part of the landscape plan, because there are other screen trees down a lot.
Yeah, she's just highlighted those.
I know.
They're all located all around, but ...
So what are we going to do in this case?
Well, I mean, it would be like this plan, and then, again, not to put words in your mouth, but if you don't, if the rhododendrons aren't important to screening, I don't want to be hearing about these rhododendrons in two years.
Right.
Yeah, but my question is, we already have a landscape plan, this is a modification to just a certain part of it, but it's not the whole plan. So, this, right, because there are screen plantings down the hill as well, for the ...
Yeah, they're listed on there, and they're going to be cited.
No, down there.
Yeah, they're listed on the plan most too, but they're ...
They're off, they're not on the, they're not actually on the plan. The original plan showed them. So, in this, it did.
No, I'm just, you know, go back to specific, this, yeah, we need a final plan of all the proposed plantings, you know?
That gets recorded.
That gets recorded.
That's, and then, and then, in that, we somehow delineate the ones that, that are critical to the, to the functioning of the landscape.
Yeah, which I think in this case is just not adding the transplants on this plan. Or on the full one.
Steve is sorry if you mentioned this.
Okay. All right, so that means, because what I was going to suggest is just keeping the original submittal, landscape plans are middle, and that's an amendment, that's just added as a separate document.
If that gets us out of the weeds on this one?
I think, I think that's the easiest thing to do.
You know, I'm just, we're jumping back and forth between like the macro and the micro, you know, so the mic, you know, the original one with the amendment, are you guys okay with, the original plan with this as amendment, are you guys okay with that?
I was looking at this, it's, the request that came out of the board was to go and hire an LA to provide a plan, a professional plan with a professional opinion, not working at this as the plan. The other one is essentially discarded, as far as I was concerned.
Well, you've, but there is screen planting on the other one, and it's located.
The other three trees, where they're located in the corner.
Yeah. If I'm incorrect, I thought it was a no bucket, but we captured it here. All we did on the other one, we didn't, because of the scale of the wiring and the acreage, we just called out at this elevation, 10 foot off of the butter of 44, we will locate three 10 to 12-foot, I think that first, or something like that.
Well, could we just have a final plan, a final, final plan, rough locations of those?
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other thing is ...
So this says in the comments, I just wanted to be, so in the comments, it says the first two are Norway spruces, 10 to 12, buffer between 28 pine and garage, that's here. And then the second plan said field locate within 10 feet of 44 pine property line. So they needed to be field located, because I don't have that corner of anything.
Well, do you ...
To provide the screening that's needed, without care.
And we're gonna, you know, you can also capture the stuff on the backside, too, because they're going to have to do an as-bills.
Or have an inspection, Kim will have to go by inspection.
You know, so you can have it, you know, those plants can be called out on the ...
Yeah, we should, I was going to say, the other part of this that was important was the preservation of the landscaping in front of the house, which is not being touched, but on the other hand, the next guy down the road, you wouldn't want to clear cut all those trees, so it's not just that, it's not just that screen that's, that's, that's important to this landscape plan. So, that's why, I thought the other plan showed the plantings at the front as well, and that's why I wanted to somehow record that.
Sorry, just to clarify, it was the same plan. It's just that this has been overlaid with the additional information that the LA came up with, it's the same plan. So what you see here is exactly, except for the matrix changing, is exactly the same as the original.
Do you have that plan?
No, we don't, as I said, I do, it's a discarded plan.
There are two different areas, so this is, this is the old plan and the garage, and this is the new one, which is in the front, it's the same public area.
Wait, see all these?
Right. See, here they're lighted.
Yeah.
Here they're not.
We need to, if we're going to delineate which ones are important and which ones aren't, then let's delineate which ones are important and which ones aren't. These are important, you know, we wanted to try to preserve that screen as much as we could, so what happens up there, you know, if somebody was to saw all these down, we'd want to take a look at that.
It's still on the PDF, but because the matrix is laid over it, it's just been wiped out by the other end. It's there, it's on the PDF.
So, so let's, nothing's been removed from the plan.
All we need is a little bit of work.
That's right. Because this was a lighting landscaping plan originally, and I was told I could not have a lighting landscape to break them apart. So the matrix was wiped over by the LA. But it's still, all of these PDF files, which this is based on, is identical.
So, I mean, you could do this, you know? We just put together a final plan that shows a limited work, no disturb, in the plantings you, your plantings you want to plant.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we'll have to look at that and tell them it's okay, and they'll look at the decision, and we'll be knowing it. Nothing, it's just like revising a final, a plan.
If you're not redrawing anything, it's just, it's just what goes into the record, so that 10 years from now, people know what was important and what wasn't. Because the chances are, if we don't make a note of it, the next guy down the, down the pipeline is going to say, why can't I cut every tree in the front, you know? And we need to say that because we felt it was important, that screen was important to keep, and it was part of the original proposal, so there has to be a dialogue there. And if there's a record drawing that should, that does exactly what, and you know what Dave was talking about.
Yeah.
Then, then we're, then we're all set. And if it's already drawn, it should say.
The data all exists, it's just happened by the matrix being wiped out.
It's just the format.
Yeah, just a material question on this, there was a neighbor who had a concern that there was a break in the buffering.
Well, I'll get to that. You had a question?
I'm Dan Chaplin. I just wanted to ask, if there was some sort of a storm, or hurricane, or some hot, you know, some event where trees fell, would the homeowners be responsible for replacing all of the trees that were important in some places?
If they're important, yeah, I mean, we'd want to take a look at what the proposal was to either replace them, or, you know, what the consequences are of the loss of the tree. It doesn't have to rise necessarily to coming in front of the planning board, you know, with a full platoon of consultants. It could be just the planner and one, one planning board member taking a look at it and signing off on it.
Because as you put in the wording, you know, in this new format, maybe there should be within basis and so on, maybe there should be some storm language, because they do happen so often.
Yeah, we can think about that. We should probably should. All right, does anybody else have any comments on this situation yet? Yes?
I'm Natalie Sawyer, I live at 28 Pine Street. I'll say for the record that the comments I made tonight are no different than the comments I made by email. We were asked by the town planner to provide those comments to her. We did that, we followed up three times, we've not received any response. So nothing I say tonight is, has not previously been raised.
Okay.
What I also think is important to point out is that we're talking about two different areas here. The directive at the last meeting was two things. First was, in front of the garage, there was an unspecified area where the transplants were supposed to be placed. The board asked for those to be specified as they generally are, by X's, what's going where, that's the garage area. The second area, which is this area right here, is in front of the living spaces, and the applicant was asked to add things there. So what we have now is, there's two additions that were made in front of the living space, but all of the screening additions that were supposed to go in front of the garage are now gone. Now, I thought I was going to say something different to you, though, here is an amendment from what I emailed, and that is, I thought I was going to come here tonight and say, well, you know, maybe we're going in the right direction here as long as we put those transplants back, but now I'm listening to a landscape architect say, well, we're not going to put them there because you can't trust transplants, because they might die anyway. So I think what that means is, now we have a new three-car garage that's extending further back, that has additional lighting, and now there's no additional screening. So for the record, I'd like to say that we continue our objection. We wish it would have been heard or ...
Well, let me ask you, if they did locate the transplanted rhododendrons, do I understand you correctly that your objection would be at least mitigated somewhat?
Yes.
Okay. Besides that issue, are there other issues that ...
Yeah, we asked questions about the size of the spruce that were proposed to be in as planted, as opposed to as they're going to grow. I have a follow-up question now about, we talked at the last meeting about whether or not the space between the property line and the driveway could actually support adequate screening. Now, hearing that, that where they need to be placed, that they're going to grow in together, is that a concern? I don't know. I'm not a landscape architect, but it sounds like maybe that's a concern. That's where we are, we ...
Well, look, I think the first, your first point, let's just rhododendrons, and, you know, and ...
Being relocated.
Being relocated, and take it from there.
In front of that third bay.
All right, and then the, the second point, we have our own landscape consultant that concurs with the landscape designer that says that, if, if that's an accurate depiction, is from the start, a reasonable screen, and will only improve. So if, that, if one of those dies, that gets replaced absolutely positively.
And honestly, that's fine. And, and we reserve our rights to come back, you know, before the occupancy, or before any other forum, if indeed as builds things are adequate.
Yeah.
But, but, but we're satisfied with that, so long as the other directive of this board from the last meeting, and that is, they take the transplant area, again, now I don't know what the value of transplants are, but if, if they take and put either those transplants in specified areas, I suppose if they die, then something else is going to have to go there of adequate measure.
You're saying that, that, those transplants, for you as the abutter, would, would rise to the level of importance if, if, if they shouldn't survive, that replacements would be, would be necessary?
Look, this house is relatively close to the property line compared to other places, it's tripling in size, we're going to see it. We want to make sure that at least there's some kind of commencement screening that's going in place, so it mitigates what we see on the basis. And, and I think that's reasonable. And we've, we've been timely in getting our comments, and looking at everything that's been before us, I, I think we're being reasonable with those comments. That's all we're asking for.
Kim, is it, is it an Al Landis request? It sounds reasonable to me.
I, I think that it's fine to do that, I would just want to stipulate that if the plant, if the transplants die, and we have something in there to say what a reasonable replacement would be.
Replacement size would be, sure.
Right. So that's not just left to chance.
Right.
And it should ...
There's also six-foot fence there.
Yeah, we, we, but they're, they're ...
And there is, there is a, I know it's not on my client's property, but there is a hemlock hedge there, too, that is not being taken care of, that has adhesions, so that is contributing to the neighbor's porosity of the border, so.
Yeah. How many transplants are we talking about?
I don't know.
Four, three?
There's, there's a need to see this on your ...
This is significant, I'll be, could transplant, that's why I think we need to call out exactly what you're thinking about.
Why don't you? I mean ...
Well, that, I leave it to the professionals to call out what I have.
There's a list of transplants that were part of the first.
Yeah, when we went to the last one, they had a list of transplants, and they just needed to mark what was going where. That was really it, I mean, that's ...
Okay.
And then you can mark what they would be replacing if they were ...
I think that goes in the condition.
Right. Okay, so, I think we have, we actually have a resolution, so I think we can look at a draft decision next, I think it's, maybe tonight is too soon, but next week, we can review the draft decision and, and vote on it. We'll vote to approve it with the modifications that we've talked about tonight, and if, if you work with Kim on, you know, that revised plan, then that goes into the record, and we're done.
Sure. So I just wanted, just to clarify, so it's the limited work line, and the transplants shown on, on the screen, and what, what they would be, reasonable replacement sizes.
That's right. That's it.
I'm sorry, I have one other question, probably for you in the email, and that is, what is the size of this spruce as, as flooding around? 10 to 12 feet, they look like that, just like that. That's a nursery photo of 10 to 12 foot. And then they ...
Good. All right, so we will continue to next Wednesday, a week from today. You're welcome to come if you'd like, but everything we talked about tonight is going to be in the decision, and that'll be that. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to start the continued public hearing before, oh, we're early.
How was that, eight thirty?
Make sure you do that. Don't want to lose those.
We're early. We can't, we can't open the hearing yet.
For what, yesterday it was supposed to be eight thirty?
I don't know how it got switched, but, that's all.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, it's eight thirty.
It's not on the website.
Yesterday.
It's not extension.
Yeah, I don't know how to flip around. No, because it's scheduled to start, yeah, 9:15. Also, if somebody objected to it, I can't view it, and they're going to be right back sitting. That's what... She called, but I haven't had a chance to call her back. I'm not calling back. Oh, that's right, she's, she's, she said, she talked to you, and she said... She was good, she was good. She needs to... Good graphics, too, real good graphics. I like the photographs of that.
See what happens when we try that stuff, but I know, I saw you look at it.
Oh, yeah. I know. Or maybe she's, she's going to be so dedicated to this that she'll...
Very well.
Yeah, no. Agenda on the website is different from what we have here in front of us.
You can't lie, you can't say lie on the website. This machine is one on the website.
I don't know, it's not mine.
Steve, is this your machine?
John, how come the agenda on the website is different from what we got in front of us?
Can I answer that question?
Okay.
But that's, this isn't printed anywhere other than what you have here. This is what's on the website.
Yeah.
And otherwise, it's just a generic announcement for you.
Yeah. Yes?
Their first name, forget the last name.
Hi, how are you? What's your name? Then when you get an R, you're like, it's instant, it's where you come from. Wait, I remember you. You want to go running after...